It's six o'clock and welcome to the Papillion La Vista Community Schools Board of Education Hearing for the Final Tax Request. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Ms. Butler.
Here.
Mr. Madler.
Here.
Ms. Witt.
Here.
Mr. Lotus.
Here.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to excuse the absence of Ms. Wood.
I will second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Lotus. Roll call, please.
Ms. Butler.
Yes.
Mr. Madler.
Yes.
Ms. Witt.
Yes.
Mr. Lotus.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Please note that the open meetings law is posted to the entrance to the room. Tonight we're here for a hearing to set the final tax request and it will be presented by Dr. Rickley and Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Good evening, everybody. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to go through this with the board one more time. Like this is, for a lot of you, it's like the fourth or fifth time, but yeah, we'll go through this tax hearing information. Just as we looked at, you know, our revenue for the 25-26 school year, we took some of the things into consideration that I'll list out. Loss of $550,000 in Title I allotment. We get about $4 million from the federal government each year and last year we received $991,000 in Title I funds. So that'll take us down to about $440 for this year. We use that money that we're gonna end up losing, we used it to kinda keep our kindergarten classes smaller. So that's what that loss and the general fund will kinda backfill that so we can continue to serve those kids at that same level. An estimated increase of 4% of total package labor increases, which includes a 5.4% increase in health insurance. As I've spoke before, labor is our biggest spending item within the district, about 85 to 87 sometimes percent of our entire spending throughout a school year. We've added a new SRO sergeant position. Tier three alternative school costs continue to rise for us as we look for, you know, options and hopefully they'll continue to open more programs for us to consider in the future. Curriculum materials and technology costs are on the rise with inflation. We're adding two bus routes this school year with 114th Street widening. We have a new elementary school that we will open in August of '26, which is still in the '25 and '26 fiscal year for us, so there's gonna have, there's gonna be some costs towards the end of this fiscal year in that area of school and curriculum operations, salaries, et cetera there. We did open our new young adult transition program for our 18 to 21-year-old students. So we'll have some school operations, additional cost for that building. Custodial maintenance operations cost increases with additional square footages. I did receive a call from OPPD the other day and they're talking a possible 5 to 7% raise again this year on top of what they did last year, so that would begin in January. More information to come on that. There we go. We're proposing a general fund budget increase of 2.6%. That'll take our budget authority to $169,816,374. We're gonna add some money into the technology sustainability efforts from general fund to the depreciation fund. We're expecting revenues and expenditures to be right around $154 million for '25-'26 within that budget. Valuation did increase of 7.6% this year with new commercial properties, new residential development, and continued home sales in the district. Good news, and I've mentioned this, state aid is up 2.75% compares to that loss of $7.6 million last year that really, you know, hurt our revenue in '24-'25. We're requesting property taxes for three funds for '25-'26, that's general, bond, and special building. From those three funds, we're recommending a 4.2% overall tax revenue increase for '24- '25. And it would look like this from the property tax request side, a total of $111,539,393 at a tax levy of $1.96547. And if we look at our overall tax levy history, I think we're making a little progress both with the legislature and the governor and the local school boards' efforts to keep our tax levy history trending down, which is always good news. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer at this time.
No questions for me, just thanks for all the work that goes into coming up with these numbers and presenting them a number of times, including the county meeting last week. And I know you got a whole, you got a team that also helps with that, so thanks to you and the team for putting all that together. Also wanted to thank Mr. Richards publicly. It's a giant jigsaw puzzle putting together this budget every single year and as Mr. Madler indicated, it is a team effort, but we really appreciate everything you've done. A couple of things. One, obviously, we're seeing the levy trending down, which is a very positive direction. I know the offset to that, and we heard that very clearly last Thursday night as well. My property valuations are outpacing how quickly you're dropping the levy, and I think in many cases that probably is true. Just continue to remind our public that is a lever that we do not control, that I don't control, the school board doesn't control, the school district doesn't control, and that is your property valuations. That is strictly a function of the county assessor, and we just need to keep reminding people of that. The other thing related to that, I just wanna thank the board and Mr. Richards for showing up last Thursday night. Had about 150 people, had a couple of board members, including Mr. Madler and Mr. Bailey, that showed up. Could've been a contentious meeting, it really wasn't. We had approximately 20, 25 public commenters and overall, just a great opportunity to share our story. So again, thanks for your good work, Mr. Richards, appreciate it.
Thank you, and since we have no comments from the public, we will close this hearing at 6:07. Moving right into our regular business agenda, having already done the call to order, we'll begin with communications and our military advisor, Colonel Mark Russell. This is his first appearance. Let's give him a round of applause.
Do I need to push it or just, good to go? Good. Awesome. Yeah, Colonel Mark Russell. So been in the seat about three months. Many of you know Colonel Patrick Kalisiak, a good friend and mentor of mine, so he switched out in June. He's over at Ohio State doing the ROTC thing, having a blast. Also Colonel Anderson, of course, I'm really filling in for him now as he has down to Jordan for his deployment for the next roughly six to seven months. So you'll be seeing me for the most part. I'm also looking to get Colonel Backus or Colonel Gray out here as well occasionally, so hopefully we'll be able to do that as well. Just a quick background on me, I'm a career civil engineer from the state of Georgia, married, wife and three kids. We've got older kids already out of the house, he's in the Air Force actually, Braden. And then I've got two kids, since we live on base, I've got two kids in Bellevue Elementary Schools, or Bellevue Schools. One's at Bellevue Elementary, my daughter, she's 10, fifth grade, and then I've got 13-year-old son who's at Lewis and Clark in seventh grade. So got that, and then I will also mention, in my 22-year career, spent about seven years as a professor at the Air Force Academy, so education's pretty near and dear to my heart, so I actually love coming to the board meetings both here and at Bellevue. Look forward to working with you. My big thing is if there's anything I can do or any way I can help, please, please let me know, so I can either help or take that back to the base as well. All right, couple of things from Off-It. Understand that for the first time ever, Off-It is hosting Mock United Nations Conference, and thank you to Papillion La Vista for entering in that, so I know we have, I think, a high school team that was able to register and is gonna be competing there. Remember when I was a kid, I think we called it Mini Model UN or something similar, so definitely cool to see that still going on and the fact that we'll be hosting it off at October 6th. It's also that time of year for the Impact Aid effort. I know you all are doing computerized, so appreciate that, and just again, I encourage you, please help us push that out, get our folks to fill out those forms, to get that done, understanding the importance of that Impact Aid. And then fourth and final, big event coming up for our Force Support Squadron, they do a big Halloween event. It'll be on October 23rd at the Youth Center, and that's their Halloween extravaganza, so they kinda go all out there with a pumpkin patch and whatnot, and I think roughly 1,000 kids and families or so come out for that. So any questions for me?
No questions, Colonel, but I did notice a reaction from Colonel Bailey to my right here when you mentioned Ohio State. He's an Indiana guy, so I think there's maybe a little bit of bad feeling there, but we do love Colonel Kalisiak just the same.
Hey, it was not his first choice, right? He's an Notre Dame guy, so think about how, think about how he's feeling. Yeah, that's rough for him, so definitely. Thank you all very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next presentation from the KIND Array. It's at Shereen.
Yes, good evening, Board of Education. So we're gonna welcome up our principals from the KIND Array. As you may recall, our elementary schools are arranged into three different arrays based on their similarities, and tonight we have the KIND Array, and that includes Tara Heights, Anderson Grove, Walnut Creek, Trumbull Park, and who'd I miss? Hickory Hill. So our principals here tonight are, I'll let them introduce themselves and they're going to, they pulled some strands from our strategic plan, they're gonna update you on engagement in their buildings and what it looks like at different levels. So with that, I turn it over to you, Jamie.
Thank you for that great introduction. I'm Jamie Beisel, I'm the principal at Walnut Creek.
Brooke Moorhead, I am the principal at Anderson Grove.
Monica Thompson, principal at Hickory Hill.
I am Dave Frithson, principal at Tara Heights.
And I am Sarah Rusk, I'm the principal at Trumbull Park.
So as I said, Shereen did a nice job of introducing us. KIND Array stands for Kids Inspiring New Directions, and so when we meet together as a team, we are kid-first. We make all of our decisions based on the best interests of our students. And one of the things that I love the most about this particular group of people is our ability to collaborate, do some great problem-solving together, and celebrate. We have a lot of great things happening in our buildings. Oh, thank you. And as we were talking about this and putting together this presentation, the conversation really started last year, and it revolved around how are we including our families in what we're doing in the classroom and in the buildings? And so that's where the conversation started, and then of course, we went to our strategic plan. And what we did is we divided it up for you into the two strands, and so we've got that piece of rigor and also engagement. And so we thought about what are the things that we are currently doing in our buildings to propel that district's strategic plan, and then what ideas can we share with each other so that we can bring those things back to our own buildings? And so Brooke is gonna start us off with what she's doing at Anderson Grove.
I'm gonna say what my staff is doing at Anderson Grove. They get all the kudos for this hard work, I just get the honor of coming and sharing it with you guys. Okay, so one piece of that strategic plan under there was increasing student engagement and ownership of learning. We work on increasing student engagement in the classrooms and in our building in a variety of different ways, but what is, what we're gonna celebrate tonight is how we increase student engagement and learning with our families, and then how they take ownership of that learning. So we know that anytime someone has to teach someone else how to do something, you increase the ownership of your learning. And so we do that a variety of different ways through curriculum events at our school. This is one of them that we wanted to highlight, so our kindergarten and third-grade music events with our families. So different grade levels are required to do a performance for the community and for their families, and that usually happens in the evenings, that's first and second grade and fifth and another grade. But kindergarten and third have to find unique ways to do that with, to share what's going on in the classroom with families, so we invite them in. I don't invite them in, my music teachers invite them in. I have two wonderful music teachers, and they invite families in, and they come in during the music class, and the students are responsible for teaching them what they've been learning. So for example, our third-grade event there was folk dancing, and we actually, I would like to invite the board, any members that have availability, next Monday is our first one. We have our third graders are going to be folk dancing with their families at 8:10 in the morning, so if anybody has that time available, you can come join us. The second, or the kindergarteners are my favorite event of the entire year. The kindergarteners at the end of the year get to bring their families in, teach them everything that they've been learning in music, and then they get a little snack with them, and it's highly attended. If we don't have, if we have families that can't come in, more than likely we have siblings in the building and we bring siblings in the building, but I would say for the most part, that's only one, maybe two students out of the whole grade level, so it's fantastic, good feedback on that. This one, owl pellets. If anybody's familiar with owl pellets, I was going to put in a catchy little song that we use, but it's kinda like those, you know, toddler songs that just get stuck in your head like Baby Shark that you didn't want probably for the rest of the evening. But if you're interested, it's a YouTube video, Science Explosion, and it gives you a little in-depth outlook on owl pellets. But so our, towards the end of the year, we have families come in and they help our students dissect the owl pellets, which is everything that an owl ate that they weren't able to digest. And we sometimes can get pretty full skeletons out of there, so you can see it's, it's something that's brought up often, okay? It's a unique experience, and our families are often like, "You brought us in for what?" So that's a good one, and again, the students work with the classroom teachers to put together everything. That is why the YouTube video is part of the presentation that they chose, 'cause it's very fifth grade. And our last one that we're gonna highlight is our Multiplication Mania, and I know a lot of different buildings do this, but our third graders throughout the year, one of their big focuses in math is learning their multiplication facts. They are responsible for learning a variety of games, and then their parents come in and they rotate through stations and teach those games to their parents and families, and then they get those materials that they get to take home and play those games with their families. So, thank you.
You're next. Thanks.
Time me.
Time you.
Okay, I'm gonna continue talking about how we encourage our parents to come in and elevate the academic experience for our students. We know the research talks about how important it is to have parents and guardians involved in the educational learning process. We see an increase in academic achievement, we see an increase in attendance for our students when our parents are involved, and we even see an increase in social emotional well-being for our students. So we want our parents involved at every level, and so this is one of the activities that we do with our first-grade students, it's learning about body systems. It's rooted in our ELA curriculum, which I know you guys have heard a lot about, and in this opportunity, the students come in and they have learned about the different body systems, the digestive system, the brain system, all of the different parts of the body, and they work with their parents too. They have an outline of their body, and they work with their parents to show them where they label the different types of the body systems. They have a wonderful time, they have little doctor kits, some of them choose to wear their masks and their stethoscopes, and we really see, there's a lot of engagement and a lot of excitement. And you can see what I've done for you, is highlight some of the standards that we try to hit on these opportunities with our students and with our families, because the whole point of this is to make sure that we're teaching our curriculum, right? And this is one way that we're emphasizing the curriculum and our standards with our parents as they are able to come into the building. You can see there's a lot of high engagement, the kids are enjoying this experience, the parents are engaged, we've got parents cutting and modeling that with families, but it's always a really fun time. The gym is just popping with energy, and like Brooke invited you, next week, I'm inviting you on Wednesday of this week. So we have our first family engagement opportunity on Wednesday this week at 2:15 in our gym, and we would love for you to join us if you would like to have that experience as well. An older grade level that you can see here is our American History Wax Museum. This actually combines two different standard units that we are working through with the ELA standards and then also the historical standards, which in the fifth grade, the United States history is a big piece. We actually have some of you come out and speak to our fifth graders about the Constitution and some of those historical elements. And again, you can see how, my example on the left, it's Olivia, and she has all of her writing on there, it's a great example of the work that she's done with the research pieces for her individual. There's a lot of excitement for the students, they're very engaged because they're excited about the person that they are researching, and so they have some boundaries, they have some parameters of what we're looking for and what they're researching, but you can see how it's an opportunity for them to show the variety of the ways that they have learned and they're able to explain that learning to others in a kind of a theatrical way. As you can see, they get really into it, and so getting students engaged and excited about their learning is also really important, and this is one of the ways that we do that. We often are, again, we have a lot of people show up to this event to see our students. One of my favorite things about these events that we host at our school is that we always have an opportunity for the younger students to come in and see what the older students are learning and doing. And what this does for us is then it creates that excitement for learning for our younger kids and that love of learning. So you get a younger student who starts to see, "Oh my goodness, when I get to third grade or fourth grade or fifth grade, I'm gonna have the opportunity to do this. I know when I get to this grade level, I'm gonna do this person, or I wanna research this topic," and I think that's really exciting. I love this picture, these are some of our first graders. It was Hawaiian Day as well, 'cause you know, we can only have too many activities on one day at school, but like, they're so engaged in hearing what Amelia Earhart had to share with them, and I think that's one of the really cool things about having a community of learners and kids that are learning, striving for that rigor together. So these are two examples of some of the family engagement opportunities that we provide at Hickory Hill, as I know my colleagues do the same thing, and we'd love to have you join us anytime, so thank you for your time tonight.
Good evening. Again, I'm Dave Frithson. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about watchdogs. Dogs stands for Dads of Great Students. And watchdogs is a program that I am extremely passionate about and very proud of, the fact that the first watchdog program started at Tara Heights here, and that was something in 2014 when I got here that was kind of a goal of mine, is to start a program like this. So you might not know what watchdogs is, but it's a national program. It brings fathers, grandfathers, uncles, any other father figures into the school as role models for students, so it gives them the opportunity to spend an entire day at school. And so they, we have them doing all kinds of things. They are so busy throughout their day, their days are very scheduled, and I have a full team at Tara that helps to plan their day and make sure that they're not just standing around. We put them to work. They spend time greeting students, they support students in classrooms, they assist at lunch and recess, and they're visible in hallways and common spaces. They're just an extra adult that's there to kinda be a support. Our watchdogs are like rock stars. The kids absolutely love them. They each wear their T-shirt that shows that they are official, they have a little badge that they wear, and so our kids just think they're cool, and they want their dads to do it too. Some of the program benefits that we've seen, you know, there's an increased sense of security and belonging, it's really, it just brings a lot of positivity, positive male role models. This program started from the viewpoint of trying to get fathers more involved in their children's education, and I think that is a great, you know, goal, but it's expanded. The program now has options for mothers and things like that, so that might be something that we look into in the future. For parents, stronger connections to the school community, like our dads walk out of there with such a different view, like, "I had no idea," you know, or, and such an appreciation for our teachers and for what their students have to handle each day. So it's their firsthand insight in the school day. It's not just a segment, it's the entire day. So, you know, for our staff, it's that extra set of hands, you know, go out and read a book or practice math facts or do those things, it's an extra thing that they can do to kind of engage our students, and it helps build that collaborative family-school partnership, which we're always seeking to do. It's been active since 2016. 2020 sort of put a little pause on our program, so we had to dial it back a little bit, and we're starting to build it back up. So last year, we had 30 volunteers total that participated, that's 42 days and roughly 300 school hours where we had watchdogs in our building. There's a strong demand, we have, our schedule is Tuesdays and Thursdays right now, and this year we've added additional Fridays once a month. We would love to have watchdogs every day, but it is a lot to plan and coordinate, so we have to limit it to some degree. But last year, 89% of the dates that were offered were filled, so, and this year, we're already off, and most of the dates so far in the next month are already taken. So we're trying to encourage new volunteers to come forward and fill out the paperwork and become certified to be a watchdog so that they can get in and experience it too. Looking ahead, again, we talked about, you know, we're offering 22 more dates this year, most of which are, have been filled, and we just wanna build back up to where we were before 2020 and kind of exceed that, that's our goal, and we just wanna sustain that parental engagement, we know that will benefit our students. So we know, again, stronger connections, safety in learning, strengthening those school partnerships, we know those are goals for our district, and we wanna do our part to be an example of that, and watchdogs is a great program that, again, I'm incredibly proud of, and I can't imagine being anywhere where this wouldn't be a program that I would not have in my school. So thank you for the opportunity to speak about it today.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rusk again, and I'm from Trumbull Park. So this is my fourth year at Trumbull, and one of the things that I really love about Trumbull Park, especially being from kinda small rural Nebraska, is the pride that there is in that community, being one of the older buildings, being one of the older schools, and just the traditions that people love there. And so just like my colleagues, we do a lot of things to engage parents because we feel that they are so incredibly important to our students' success, and we really wanted to come up with some different ideas on ways to, you know, engage parents and engage families, and especially with that communication piece between us and between our families. So last year, we started, actually last spring, we started a parent advisory committee. We had each classroom teacher nominate one family, and then our special education department also nominated a family, and we started meeting once per quarter. So the parent advisory committee was created by Ms. Murphy, our school counselor, and myself, and what we wanted to do was make sure, again, that parents had a really active role in shaping our school's culture, our programs, the support that we provide for our students and our families. So it's separate from the PTO. We have, like everybody here, we have a phenomenal PTO, but this is a separate committee. We meet and really focus on just having that open communication, doing some problem-solving together, collaborating, and then making sure that we're building that trust with our community, making sure we have those meaningful connections, answering any questions that they may have, and then just getting their perspective and their voice on things so that they feel like they really have an impact on their student's success and the well-being of their students in our school. So again, we had two, we had a meeting in February, and then we had our second meeting in April of last year, and I just kinda threw up the agendas here for you to see just some different things. You know, sometimes we get into our school day and kind of take for granted that we know exactly what's happening in the building, but maybe parents aren't quite sure why we do different things and what does this mean? So our first meeting, we really sat down and talked to them about what would you like to get out of this committee, you know, what would you like us to hear you about, what's going well, where do you think there are areas of growth for us, and, you know, if you could choose one thing over the next year to improve, what would that be? And then at the end, we just said, "Give us Trumbull Park in one word." And again, we got a lot of pride and tradition and family, and so it was really a great initial meeting. We got a lot of great feedback from families, and then a lot of thank yous, like, "This was really helpful." We took our information from that meeting and asked their input for the next meeting on what else would they would like to see on the agenda, and some of the big things, just like a lot of schools, drop off and pickup was a big, was a big talking point, which was great, they had phenomenal ideas about that. Celebrating our students, you know, again, our families are so proud that we love to celebrate our students and celebrate each other, so they had some great ideas there. So they had some great ideas there. They were very curious about, like, how does the budget work? What does the school do? What does the district do? And so just again, giving them some of that information that maybe we, it's just every day for us, but for them, they just have some questions about. And then we just opened it up to them for other feedback and other questions. One of the things that came out of it that we are moving forward with this year was they were asking about kind of more streamlined communications. So we're working with the communications department and piloting a program there, so we'll get their feedback on that this year. So really, just making sure that we're hearing them, that they're allowed to have their voice, and help us to make Trumbull Park, you know, the best place that we can make it. So moving forward, we'll again continue to meet quarterly. We'll have our first meeting for this year in the next few weeks, and just provide that opportunity for parents to share their feedback, discuss their priorities, and really just partner with us to set their students and all of our students and families up for success. And then we'll be able just to gather that input, meet with our teams about it, and then come back to them. Before each meeting, we will talk to them and just see, is there anything that you want to add to the agenda? Is there anything specific for this year that we can add? And questions that we can answer for you moving forward? And how can we work collaboratively together towards solutions? And just, again, just making it a consistent, valuable part of our decision-making process. So that, in a nutshell, is a very fast way of explaining our parent advisory committee. Thank you.
Thank you. So the last strand that we wanted to highlight tonight was increasing student participation in activities and extracurriculars, also known as after-school clubs. And so it looks a little bit different in each of our buildings. We really rely on the talent of our staff members because usually they are the ones that are sponsoring our different clubs. We also rely on our curriculum and instruction department because they do fund some of these ventures, and, as well as our PTOs. They are very supportive of these extracurricular activities that we offer. So at Walnut Creek, we have a few. One of them is Girls on the Run. It's a national program, and the girls end the season with a 5K in Lincoln. Great for camaraderie, confidence, motivation. Down to the left, you'll see our K Kids. So they sponsored a Community Closet Drive. They're part of the Kiwanis Club for students. And so we do some philanthropic activities as well. And then you can see our Crazy Eights. That is a math club for kids that are a little reluctant to do math, and you can see they're having a great time. So that is just a snapshot of some of the different activities that we offer. We also have the Wildcat Choir. We've got art, Boys Health and Fitness, Battle of the Books. So it really just depends on what students are interested in, and again, the talents of our teachers. But research shows us, Monica alluded to this, student attendance increases when you offer after-school activities. Connections to classrooms strengthen as well because you have that enrichment piece, and you really get to tap into the talents and maybe unknown interests of students. So that boosts their confidence, their motivation. And the best part about it is, it's an opportunity for stronger communication and problem-solving skills, because these students are in groups with other grade-level students. So kids that they wouldn't necessarily spend a lot of time with, they get the opportunity to learn from in these venues. One of the additions that we added at Walnut Creek was a Planet Captain Garden. We were the first school in the state of Nebraska to receive that grant, and that afforded us four garden beds for vegetables. And so our green team is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of our gardens. And they harvested basil. It was, we had an abundance of basil. And so they made homemade pesto as part of their club, and they canned it and brought it to some local businesses to share. Because of the success of our vegetable garden, my sponsor for the green team, Jen Carey, she's a fourth-grade teacher, reached out to UNO and Conservation Nebraska and did some partnership work with them, where they went to Glacier Creek and harvested seeds. So they looked at native species of seeds, worked with the UNO students and learned from them, brought them back to the building. We now have four pollinator gardens in addition to our garden beds. And so it's a great opportunity for students to really understand farm-to-table. They might sneak a cherry tomato during recess, and we fully encourage that. And the ecosystem and the life cycle, and again, those connections to curriculum. They really understand how to care for our environment, in addition to having an opportunity for parents to get involved because they certainly helped out with some of those garden beds. And then finally, I'm on the south side, so my school feeds to Papillion La Vista South High School, and we have a really strong feeder-school connection. And so you might have seen signs that say "South Side Pride." That is one thing that the principals at the high school really work with us on, to create that sense of community and connection. And one of the things that they did on Friday, hopefully you got a chance to go to the homecoming parade, so our sixth graders got to march in the parade, and that is a huge source of pride for our students to represent our school there. To the left, you can see the state championship basketball team representing at an all-school assembly. So they came and talked about being a stellar student inside and outside of the classroom. And by the end of their presentation, they were signing autographs on kids' shoes, right? Like, they are heroes in our kids' eyes. So what a great opportunity to get those students back into our buildings. They will come and read during Schools Across America Week. They really have an awesome opportunity to inspire kids that will be in their shoes in just a matter of time. And so that last photograph is our annual tradition at Walnut Creek. We take a picture of our kindergarten students with our seniors. So we see that trajectory, kindergarten through 12th grade, and what it looks like for education in Papillion. And so to kind of wrap up our presentation, Papillion is known for having a rigorous, excellent education. We're known for greatness. That's that first strand that we talked about with our district strategic plan. But really, the greatest thing about Papillion is its community, and that's that engagement piece, engagement for all. And so I know we are doing great things in our buildings because we have the support of a very talented staff, awesome PTOs that say yes when we have crazy ideas, our Board of Education that supports the things that we want to do for kids, and our community that continues to show up. So I know we're only five of the 16 elementary schools, but we thank you for your support. We're proud of the work that we do, and we're just going to keep on doing it. Thank you.
And that concludes the presentation by the kind array, unless you have additional questions or clarification.
Don't have any questions. Just, I just have a huge thank you again. It's awesome to see everything that you're doing, that you, and I know you said it a couple of times, your staff is doing, which is very important, and they work very hard. So just thank you very much for that and for making, you know, our job easier when you're doing such great work out there. So really appreciate that.
Oh, Mr. Bailey.
Yeah. Piggyback on Mr. Bailey, thank you all for, one, being here on Monday night and presenting for us. We've talked about it in other meetings. It's getting the engagement, not just, you know, from the families is great, too, but a continued engagement from students in things outside of the classroom keeps them engaged and more involved in the schools, and they want to keep coming back to the schools. I know you all have great staff, so keep encouraging them to come up with those ideas and keep funneling up if there are, you know, resources and support needed for those ideas as well, along with working with the great PTOs that we have. So thank you all for coming, and a great presentation.
Out of this array, two firsts, nationally-recognized first organizations. One was recognized. Dave saw the first watchdog programs. He mentioned that in his presentation, nationally-recognized program. It's since spread to other buildings, including Ramsey Station. What was not mentioned was our very first Purple Star Department of Defense came out of our own Anderson Grove, the Fighting Quails. I might add, I'll create a little bit of tension and excitement, there will be another nationally-recognized program that is coming to this array. I don't want to steal any of their thunder yet. I don't think I can announce that yet, can I, Shereen? So she's shaking her head at me, so. So you're going to find out, one of these schools in the array is also going to receive some national designation here in a little bit, but more details on that. Outstanding presentation, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Well done.
All right, moving on to item C under Communication Reports, Dr. Rickley, Superintendent.
Thank you very much, Ms. Witt, members of the board. For members of the community that may be watching at home, thank you for engaging with your Board of Education. We know you're busy people, but we certainly appreciate your support, both in the boardroom and at home. It is a PD day today, the second PD day of the 2025-26 school year. So didn't have an opportunity to visit schools this morning. Monday mornings and board meetings tend to be pretty packed with meetings, but I did get over to Monarchi this afternoon. We had Marzano training for both first-year teachers and second-year teachers. I saw Dr. Siri and her team out and about, so some really good training going on at all of our buildings. We make good use of this time away from our students. Also wanted to announce that both homecomings are officially in the books for both Papillion La Vista High School, who went first, and Papillion La Vista South High School, who went last week. Both weeks were really fun. It's always fun to cap off the homecoming week with an athletic victory, both teams did, but I just want to wish both schools congratulations for all of the activities, the Homecoming Court royalty, all of the activities in sports. Football tries to be, it kind of is, the culminating activity on the Friday night, but fall sports in general, marching band, all of the other activities that are a part of the homecoming week. Just want to thank the students, the families, and the sponsors for making it such a special week for our kids. Just like one of our array schools talked about an advisory structure, the district also maintains a number of advisories that are kicking off this week. So we maintain four active advisories at any given time. We have a teacher advisory, meets once a quarter, a classified staff advisory, meets once a quarter, student advisory that meets once a month, alternates between the two high schools, and a business elected official. I might add that Dr. Settles is playing around with the idea of restarting an advisory that we had when I first started, and it kind of fell apart under its own weight, but we had a teacher, a retired teacher and administrator advisory that we tried for a few years, and it didn't quite get off the ground the way we thought, but we're going to give that another try. But in any event, we're meeting with our teachers and our classified staff this Thursday afternoon. Should be a really good conversation about some really impactful topics, including strategic planning. And we are meeting with our students for the very first time tomorrow. Just as a reminder to the board, we have eight monarchs, we have eight titans, we rotate between the two schools. We'll be at Monarch tomorrow. And one of the things that we'll talk about besides what they want to eat, because of course, when we survey them and we talk a little bit about, what do you want for lunch? Because we always meet over lunch. We're going to be talking about what has contributed to the start of the school year. And again, keeping in mind, you have freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors on this advisory. So we'll be talking a little bit about, what's the good stuff that's hopefully led to the start of a productive school year? What are the things that have maybe proved challenging to you or been perhaps a roadblock? So more details to follow on that. Also wanted to share with the board and community, I'm personally part of Commissioner Maher's advisory. He has a group of superintendents that he meets with throughout the year. We had our first commissioner's advisory last Monday, so I was out of the district for about three-quarters of the day. I was in Hershey, Nebraska, which if you're not a student of Nebraska geography, it's about 15 miles straight west of Dr. Siri's old stomping grounds in North Platte, Nebraska. So I went out Sunday evening, spent the night, spent most of the morning in Hershey, and then was back in the district late in the afternoon. So we had a great number of topics that we discussed, including a topic of high interest to this board, and that is the special education issue, when do services end, at 21 or 22? We had a very spirited conversation with the commissioners, as well as some of the superintendents. Every one of them is watching that topic very closely. Other things that have restarted since the start of the school year, teammates, the teammates board of directors has started meeting. They held their first social event of the year. They did a program at Twisted Vine last week after hours, that was a great activity to attract new mentors. It was one-part celebration of outgoing board members, but we were also using that opportunity after hours to attract new mentors. We're always on the lookout for new mentors. And finally, we've celebrated a couple of other firsts, our first liaison lunches of the year. And for those of you that may be watching at home, a liaison lunch consists of the superintendent, an assistant superintendent, and one board member sitting down and having lunch with each one of our 21 buildings and ancillary programs. It's a wonderful opportunity for all of us, not only to be visible in the building, but to hear firsthand some of the challenges that we're seeing across the school district. The final activity we had, Dr. Villarreal, talking of family engagement. We hosted a family engagement activity, first of many, here at our central office. We held some of these events last year. I know Dr. Villarreal was hoping for more. We had almost 100 individuals show up after school, and I think that's a great testament to our families, our kids, our community. When we open up our doors, people want to be part of what we're doing. So lots of firsts in the first month and a half of school, and many more to come. And with that, Ms. Witt, I'll conclude my superintendent comments.
Thank you. How about board members? What'd you guys do this week, this month? Can you beat him? No.
I had a lot of different activities. We've already talked about some of them, the area membership meeting, of course, that we were all at. I had our first maybe meeting of the year. I think we talked a little bit about that. So Lisa is going to be the alternate now because technically can only have one of us on there, so that's what we're going to do. So I will be the, continue to be the representative for that. Very good meeting to kind of catch up and kind of start off the year. Since it was a day after the area membership meeting, we had John Spotts come and kind of give us a recap for those that weren't at the area membership meeting. It was a good thing. See, I can't read. I had a group of HALL students, and very nicely, they gave me a nice thank you card, come to UNO, and we've done this, gosh, I think, at least maybe five years now, six years or something, where they come down and a group of them, and I kind of give them a real quick lesson on how to fly, and then we put them through our simulators. I've got some of my students that come and volunteer, and it's amazing how many, you put that out there, and how many college students are like, oh, yeah, I'd love to go do that. And then, but they did a great job with the students, and, you know, it's fun to watch these younger students get in there and try to learn how to fly an airplane. So it was a lot of fun to do that, and I always enjoy it. It's always one of those where you kind of get a little geared up because you got a lot of students coming, and, you know, they kind of talked about parents spending an entire day. You know, I got two hours with them, and I was like, okay, I'm exhausted, it's time for something. But their full energy was fantastic. It was fun to watch. And then you mentioned a liaison lunch. We went to Papillion La Vista South with Katie and you and everything, and they did a great presentation with all the academic things that they have going on with their testing and their, with their SATs, and then their AP testing, and talking a lot about that and how well they're doing with that. And it was, it was, it was very good to talk about that and to hear something about athletics, or not athletics, but academics in the high school, because obviously, it seems like you, we always hear about the sports teams that are doing very well, but they're also doing great things academically. And then they brought up the, what is it, Bell to Bell No Cell, I think is what they said, that our, last week, that our student council members brought up and how well that's working. Had a couple of teachers that were in on the lunch and talking about how much they appreciated it, how much more engagement they're getting from the students. It's not just turn off your phone and set it down, it's put the phone up somewhere so that they're all engaged in the classroom. So that was, it was a great lunch. Enjoyed, enjoyed talking to them. And then, like I said, oh, then, yeah, then our fun meeting last Thursday. Once again, thank you very much for all your work with that and sitting up there with that. So we really appreciate it. So it was a lot easier to sit back in the back and just watch, so. And I'll shut up.
I think you beat him.
I also got to kick off liaison lunch season across the street. I got there way too early because I didn't have my calendar right, but I got to, I hadn't been across the bridge in a while, so it was good to walk over here and visit with some folks at the central office on an onboard meeting day. So a great first liaison lunch, you know, focused primarily on just some of the new things that they're doing within their building, and some new tools and things that they have, what they call kind of the first five minutes, last five-minute strategies, just to quickly get folks engaged in what they're going to be learning for that day, and then again, you know, how are they wrapping it up, and just some new tools that they have to provide teachers with fun activities that tie into the lesson. So that's been great. They also did bring up the cell phone policy, has really helped. They, you know, different level than obviously the middle school, than high school, so how are kids going to react to the new policy? And they got great engagement right away, and outside of just a few reminders here and there, they also have seen increased engagement within the classroom. So that is fantastic. Of course, Papillion Middle went under significant construction projects over this last summer, so we touched base on when some of those were wrapping up, or, and then some additional things that they would like to see done as we come back into the building again next summer. summer. Always a topic that we see every year again, just the continuation of supports for behavioral issues. And so just brainstorming some ideas of what other things can be done, or programs that might be able to be implemented to continue to support those without just throwing, hey, we just need more paras to free up time to deal with a student that might be having an issue. So, yeah, and the big thing that I wrote down was just, within those behaviors, is just, you know, having somebody come in once every quarter, or once every six weeks, you know, just doesn't build those relationships and consistencies that a lot of these students need. So how can we develop that and provide the resources for those relationships and consistency? So, so, and then, yep, like, one of the last things we talked about was just, you know, how, what are our considerations for when we go into negotiations for pay, and just different things, and how, what comparisons we're looking at to ensure? And so we provided a really good recap on kind of who's in our Array as we look at that, and who's comparable. And so, really good, great questions, great discussions. So it's fantastic for Mr. Johnson and his team. And outside of that, yeah, I went to a lot of the other stuff we all went to, so I will leave it there. Thank you.
I had a liaison lunch at Portal, and they call themselves the Stars, and everything was built around that, that persona, I guess. They were five building, staff members present, the administration, teachers, and specialists were included. They had some positive happenings happening. The construction had a few things to complete, but staff and students were very flexible, and they praised the staff for being able to make classroom experiences so positive, even while construction was happening. They have an upcoming Star Run fundraiser that they think is one of their most supported community events, and it's always a lot of fun, so they're looking forward to, good weather for that, hopefully. We discussed topics that were happening in the legislature, and how that affects our buildings and schools. The district's efforts to address staffing shortages, especially in special ed, and including the need for paras, and Dr. Settles was very informative in that area. Teacher professional development was important to them, and they talked about some of the things that they felt needed to be changed to make it more effective for them regarding credits. And one-to-one technology in the lower elementary grades was important to them, and they wanted to know what the district was headed in that direction. We heard here, and I hear this at almost every liaison lunch, that we have the best people. So, yeah, it's like, you guys all have the best people, you are the best people. The other thing that, I was listening to Dr. Rickley talk about family engagement, and then all of you talk about family engagement, and how really important it is to happen at all levels, but I think the elementary is really where the most effect comes from those family engagements, because you can really get those parents in and involved, but at the higher level, it's really more of a supportive side, whereas in the elementaries, they're really hands-on with the kiddos, and I think that's great. Then on Friday, the 19th, I did attend the Papillion La Vista South Homecoming Parade, and oh my God, that's one of the best things. If you can go to that, you should. Every single elementary school had a representation there, and they marched along with the band and the sports teams and the
ROTC.
ROTC, and it was just amazing. And then the court went through on their little floats, you know, and went all the way around the building, and Runza Rex was there waddling along.
Runza Rex was there?
Yeah, it was, it was the best weather, and it was just so inspiring to see the kids involved in that. So thank you for allowing me to come to that, because it was fabulous. I think that's all I have. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, let's move on to committee reports, Building Grounds and Finance.
We have not met.
Human Resources and Student Services.
So we did meet last week on September 15th, discussing a couple items that are on tonight's agenda, the option enrollment resolution discussion, as well as the custodial warehouse tentative agreement. We spent quite a bit of time going over our current enrollment numbers, what our current staffing situation is, and what we're kind of seeing projected for next year already. A few unfilled positions, and maybe some anticipated mid-year additions as well. We went over our capacity report, and started to discuss the expectations for Lincoln View with the potential numbers of exceptions to our set boundary rules.
Thank you. And Curriculum and Americanism?
We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but to accommodate Ms. Wood's vast travel schedule, we needed to reschedule that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our action items for tonight, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Madler, and a second by Ms. Butler. Any comments? Roll call.
Mr. Madler?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Lotus?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item B, we have the adopt of the state science standards by Dr. Siri.
Yes. So as you may recall, at our last board meeting, I went through some of the basic information for the science standards. As you recall, this is a requirement according to Rule 10 and state law, that we do either adopt the Nebraska state standards, or that we write our own, and they be as rigorous or more rigorous. Our recommendation is that we adopt the Nebraska state science standards that were written in the 2024-2025 school year and approved by the Nebraska State Board of Education. They are a very minor tweak or modification from the 2017 standards. We do not foresee a lot of big changes coming from this curriculum adoption cycle when these standards roll into our toolbox process.
Any questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Nebraska state science standards of 2024.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Lotus. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Lotus?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Madler?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the 2025-26 budget funds. I believe that's Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Well, tonight is kind of a culmination of a year-long process, really, when you're developing a budget. You know, I want to thank you all for your subcommittee inputs, your board meeting inputs, certified and classified negotiation time. I mean, that's a big part of it. Technology initiatives, you know, our facility improvement projects, and developing strategic plan initiatives is all a part of that budget, and many other items as well. But we're at that time where we can put numbers to those things. So tonight you'll approve, or vote on, approval of the general fund, depreciation fund, special building fund, bond fund, school nutrition fund, cooperative fund, student fee fund, activity fund, and we would go ahead and as an administration, and recommend the board to approve the adoption of those budget, for each of those funds, as presented on the attached budget resolution and state budget forms.
I'll make the motion to approve the adoption of the Papillion La Vista Community Schools' budget for 2025-26 as presented on the attached budget resolution and state budget forms.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Madler, and a second by Mr. Lotus. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Richards? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Lotus?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Madler?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And finally, on your action items, finally, on direction, we have the superintendent's 2025-26 performance goals. Dr. Rickley.
Thank you very much, Ms. Witt. Members of the board, we've discussed performance goals at least twice in open session, once in our regularly scheduled board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and then we did some follow-up conversation in our board retreat. The board goals really haven't, excuse me, the superintendent goals really haven't changed since our last conversation, although the one thing that came up was kind of involvement in different boards and activities, and I have put together a one-page, or I shared that with cabinet this morning. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing anything, so I will push that out to the board so that they can kind of get a feel for that. So just as a follow-up to that conversation, wanted to make sure that the board knew that we were tracking on that, and that will be in my next weekly update. Otherwise, I don't think I have anything else to add unless the board has questions about the proposed goals.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve the superintendent's 2025-26 performance goals as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Lotus, and a second by Mr. Bailey. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Madler?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Lotus?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, custodial and warehouse tentative agreement. Dr. Settles, please.
Thank you so much. Yes, first of all, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Witt, Mr. Lotus, and Ms. Wood, for all of your input on this over the past months. We did begin our negotiations with our custodial group back in early June, and met a couple of times with them, came to a tentative agreement in July. That agreement with them had, did fail by one vote, so brought it back to them, met again, and here we are. They met most recently on September 6th, and approved the tentative agreement, which we're now bringing before you. So the contract, I'll bring it back to you again, on October 13th to be approved. One of the things you'll notice in here, typically, their contract does begin on September 1st. So if this is approved by you, there would be back pay then for them on their November paycheck to make up for those couple of months. But I believe we have a great plan in place for them here, great contract in place. So what you'll see in this, it is a two-year agreement. It does include a wage increase in year one of 3.94%, and in year two, 3.8%. The uniform allowance was previously $200. That would go up to $225. And the health insurance plan options do remain the same, but does reflect the 5.49% average increase in the EHA plan costs. Also for them, as you've seen us do with a couple of the other groups, their personal leave days would go up to four days rather than three. And as we did with the teacher group as well, the bereavement days would go from 10, which was previously five, for loss of a spouse, domestic partner, or child. So other pieces, we have in there starting rates, and, but those don't affect our current people. But I do believe we're in a good spot for our starting rates. Our new employees for the driver's warehouse and custodial runs between $18.40 an hour, up to $19.30 an hour, with a differential paid for the night crew, that is hard to fill, very late night crew. Besides that, everything else in the agreement remained the same, but you'll see in the packet that you have, the red line agreement, as well as one that is a clean agreement, which should have everything accepted, any of those changes accepted, and then it is listed in draft. But do you have any questions that I can help to answer at this time?
Seeing no questions. Well done. Thank you, Dr. Settles. I'm glad we're finally able to get them moving forward with their current year paychecks. Our last item under discussion is the option enrollment resolution. Missy Stoli, is this your first time in front of us?
Yes. So you have the resolution in your packet. The resolution is required. We'll discuss it tonight, and then just walk through it and answer any questions that you may have. Key things to note is the school's at capacity. So Lincoln View is opening in the fall, and we're really excited for that. With that, though, we would recommend that Ashbury Elementary, Lincoln View Elementary, and Prairie Queen Elementary would start at capacity in the fall of '26-'27. That's really based on the neighborhood growth, and the current numbers, and the projection enrollment, and then our current staffing, and where we're at with our FTE for our elementary schools. No other changes or recommendations from that. Reviewing just the special education programming that is determined case by case and follows state statute, that we review all records and request all records, and make those determinations based on that. So not much to add or change, with the exception of the addition of Lincoln View coming our way in the fall.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
How many years has Prairie Queen and Ashbury been at capacity?
These are great questions. I'm going to go with Dr. Settles.
Yeah, so I'm thinking Ashbury did not open at capacity. We did open that as an open building, and then, which we typically, for brand-new buildings, do open them as closed, just because you set your numbers for sections, and that was one, though, that the growth hadn't, since it was kind of that COVID 2020 time, or there just was not a lot of fast growth like we had anticipated there. It slowed a little bit with costs and the construction materials and being slow to come in. So we did end up opening that one as an open school. And then I think that one has been marked one of our capacity schools for the last three years at least. That is probably right now our fastest-growing school. Then Prairie Queen, I believe, I don't know that we have gotten to a point of being able to open back up Prairie Queen. I think it has remained. That's one that we'll have to review after this next two years. The numbers with that are a little bit up in the air right now, since we do have a couple of exceptions, being the students who will be the fifth and sixth graders, and the idea of whether or not they'll remain there, those that are going to be a part of Lincoln View, or if they'll go to Lincoln View. So we've got a planning meeting actually for that this week. One of the things we'll talk about at that is the process for families to make that determination. And then I believe there are 16 families that could potentially stay at Prairie Queen for military, rather than move over to Lincoln View as well. So that's one as well that would be a bit of a question mark at this time. So one of the pieces that makes it a little bit hard with this particular resolution is this has to be done in October, and a lot of the planning for the following year happens, you know, between November and April, so.
Ms. Butler, all of our elementary buildings, with the exception of La Vista West and Golden, are three-unit buildings, which means their stated capacity is approximately 450. I believe Prairie Queen's sitting around 510-ish. I can't remember the last time they were below 450. I mean, it minimally five years, and I think Mr. Lotus was shaking his head at me. It's probably been longer than that. So Prairie Queen has been a closed building, being above that 450 number for several years, at least five probably longer than that. And then a question for me. It says the Nebraska law, we have to adopt no later than October 15th, declaring a program, a class, or school unavailable. But in this, it says we can, we reserve the authority to do that at like that class and that grade level for the schools. Do we have to, do you have to come back to us to ask to close it, or us passing this potentially next meeting gives you the authority to, we close, you know, third grade at Tara?
Yeah, that's a great question. It gives us the authority to do that, and then we make those decisions as the school year goes. And it's interesting, you know, just starting in July, the numbers that shifted just between July 1st and now in August, but yeah, great question.
And do you have to keep updating the state with those closures, or when we just get an application for that school, or a classroom that we feel is closed, you just have to communicate to the parent?
Yeah, so it just goes off of the, like, our capacity based off of staffing, is the numbers that we use, and they have a great chart, human resources, and teaching and learning, and student services has this formula, and we use that to determine class size. So that's the numbers that we use to make those determinations for
Okay.
And then we would typically also, just to add to that, will any family from Option that is trying to option in, if they choose a school that does not have available space at that specific grade level, then we'll go to the next, you know, we'll work with them on what are some of their other choices that might work or be convenient for them, and give them some other options. and give them some other options, because there usually are other places that would have some availability, but we might not have at a specific school that they're wishing to get into.
Yeah, perfect.
Most of them pick three, some of them don't pick any, some of them just one in-
Yeah.
-to the school district, so they just option in wherever. But then if they pick those, you know, they put three, and then to Dr. Settles, that's how we work through that process.
Perfect. All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know it's important to keep our class sizes down, and this is an important way that we can do that. And again, we still have room in other schools that we can option into our district. They are welcome to become members of those different schools as well. Thank you very much, Missy.
Thanks, Missy.
Okay, that leaves us to open, we have no public comment tonight, so we're going into the future board calendar on September 24th, liaison lunch at Golden Hills with Ms. Butler on October 7th, liaison lunch at Prairie Queen with Mr. Lotus. October 10th, there's no school, and October 13th, there's no school due to Professional Development Day. And October 13th, we do have our next school board meeting here at 6:00 PM. Seeing no further business, we will adjourn at 7:11.